All righty. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 2016, 2018. I want to welcome everybody to the City Council Work Session Meeting. It is the budget kickoff and a few other items. We do have six items to cover. I'd like to keep this meeting to 60 minutes if we can. So let's kind of go through everything. It's just the kickoff. It's a lot of ideas, and we'll have many more meetings on all of these items as we go forward. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb, and you can move on with your presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is the first of a series of work sessions that we'll be conducting over the next six months in preparation of the FY 2018-19 budget. Traditionally, this first meeting is more of a recap of where we are now, and also some of the impacts of decisions that we've made that will carry over into the 18-19 budget. Mr. Boop has prepared some information for you, so I'm going to turn it over to him and let him present what our findings are so far.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. What you have in front of you tonight is the March outlook for the 2018-19 budget. We've broken it up into several sections: revenues, expenditures, transfers in. And on the right-hand side of the sheet, you'll see changes in expenses, which we have identified thus far as the extraordinary items that will be impacting us next fiscal year. Looking at revenues, we've programmed in a 5% increase to ad valorem, which is $565,000. We've also trended forward utility taxes and franchise fees, and those totaled $100,000,[118.64][118.64]$50,000 respectively. Down on the bottom of the revenues, you'll see that there's an additional $30,000 that we've programmed in, and that is due to the increasing interest rate environment that we are currently experiencing. The number could trend higher by the end of the year, but we're taking a conservative approach to that. So when we compare the revenues now to the revenues last year, our revenues are coming in at $27.3 million as compared to last year of $26.9 million. However, please note that last year in the revenues, we programmed in $329,000 in the use of fund balance. We don't have any use of fund balance in this year's budget yet. Okay? Looking at the expenses, we've programmed in a 3% increase for general government salaries and benefits, which totals $185,000. We've also programmed in the impact of the new contracts for police, which is $320,000. There's an impact of 3% for the fire salaries and benefits, folks, for those that are not in the bargaining unit, and that is $10,000, excuse me. And we've also programmed in $15,000 for the partially funded positions that we have in the current fiscal year, which will be fully funded in the next fiscal year, which are the recreation coordinator and the planning tech. Looking at health insurance, we're moving through that process as we speak. We've programmed in a 10% increase, which is $312,000. We were supposed to meet with our insurance broker last week, but that was canceled due to the storm. Workers' compensation, general insurance, property insurance, we've been advised by our insurance carrier that that will increase at least 10% over the next year, which also includes the impact from the hurricanes. What we haven't been able to program in is the potential impact on workers' compensation due to the recent legislation that was passed for PTSD for public safety, post-traumatic stress syndrome. Operating expenses are programmed to increase about 2%, which is $121,000. When you bring all that together, the 2019 expenditures totaled $28.2 million versus $27.2 million last year. However, please note again, last year, that we did budget a reserve for contingency. Transfers in, transfers out, transfers out debt, transfers in are decreased by the $257,000 contribution from the CRA, $104,000 contribution from Building Services Fund, and $113,000 in contribution from the Police Forfeiture Fund, which was used to help assist funding the SRO officers in the current fiscal year. Transfers out are decreased by $251,000, which was for the HVAC systems for both the City Hall this year and the Annex Building. Transfers out debt is flat right now, pending a couple items that are up for consideration, which are in the change in expenses. So when we bring all of that together, our projected shortfall is $745,000 before the changes in expenses, which I consider extraordinary for next fiscal year. If you look over to the right side of the schedule under change in expenses, you'll see that we've listed the federal lobbyist, which is $60,000. We've listed the financing for the breathing apparatus, which was recently approved for the fire folks, of $75,000, which would be the debt service payment. Right now, the proposal in front of us, and we are in the process of negotiations with the fire folks, we're including $721,000. Overtime related to that proposal is $260,000, and we've had an anomaly occur this year due to the 2017 Tax Reform Act, where our debt service may increase approximately $50,000 or $40,000 due to the bank's loss of tax deduction for the revenues that are associated with our notes. So we're working through that right now with our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities. We don't know what the potential impact or the final impact of that's going to be, but that is what we're listing out there. So when you bring all that together, it totals $1,156,000 for the changes in expenses that we've identified so far. We add that to the shortfall of $745,000, and we have a net shortfall of 1.9 million. What does that mean to us right now, where we stand? We are in the process of completing the CAFR. That should be presented to you the second meeting in April. And when we take the projected fund balance from the CAFR of $5.6 million, and we take away the 1.9 million, that leaves us with a projected ending fund balance of $3.7 million. Now, GFOA's best practices recommend 16.67%, which totals 4.8, almost 4.9 million. That puts us $1.1 million below that target. Our own policy requires 15%, and we would be $629,000 below that target as we stand right now. With that, that is the March outlook. I would be glad to entertain any questions you might possibly have.
Okay. Thank you. Keith, any questions? No. Megan?
So this is saying that we're going to have an expected shortfall of 629 between now and October?
No, the anticipation-
But we're talking about the next budget.
Next budget.
Okay.
Right, next year. That's where we stand right now.
All right, thank you.
And there's a lot of work to be done still.
Bob?
The 5% increase in the ad valorem, that is based off of property values, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there was no increase in here projected for the actual mileage rate? It's just the increase in property values?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Can I just clarify, what shortfall you said again? Number, right now?
1.9 million.
1.9?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's only March. Come June, it'll be-
You say that every year.
And it always is. Don't worry about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
5% is very conservative, based on our increase last year and the construction that we've had going on this year.
It could be.
Right.
The one thing that we're facing now that we haven't faced in previous-
And I realize you have to build the budget on-
Yeah.
-being conservative. But we do this every year to ourselves at this meeting. You know, this shortfall number is this big, and then it keeps shrinking, shrinking, shrinking.
In fact, this is the first year, I believe, that we've ever given you revenues. And the reason we gave you revenues is because I didn't like the shortfall number.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But to your point, this is the concern that I have about our ad valorem revenues for the general fund. As we go forward, we're going to see increasing property values in the CRA. So it makes it very difficult for us to begin to forecast, because of the tilt in property values, what will actually end up in the general fund. Some will go to the CRA, and some will go to the general fund. It's a very difficult mix for us to forecast right now.
Okay. So we just keep it conservative like you always do?
Yes, sir.
And we have the numbers that show 10% or 11% or whatever?
When we get the real numbers, we're going to-
A little birdie told me we could be expecting 10% this year.
Oh, really? Does that include the CRA?
They didn't say. It was just a birdie.
Yeah, that's my concern, the CRA.
Well, we'll wait and see. Another quick question. I mean, the fire bargaining agreement, fire overtime, I mean, that's just based on the preliminary what they presented, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Not associated or anything at all. The fire overtime, you know, there's overtime already built into their budget. Are you saying that that would be the increase in overtime based on the contract that they presented? Or are you saying that is what their total overtime is for the year, and it's already over here on the left-hand column?
On the contract that they presented.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
So Jerry, a lot of the shortfall is those six items there?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right, so you can focus in on those and see what we can do.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Great. Any other questions? We appreciate your annual gloomy outlook.
Thank you.
But it's better that you give it to us this way, in all honesty, than the way we used to get it in the past, where everything was always perfect, so.
Do you have the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
No, go right ahead.
Do you have the projected fiscal year '18? Have you projected that out to the end of the year as well?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. I'm just trying to see how close we were to budget and where we're at.
I see it counted in him coming out.
Those are good questions. We anticipate, you know, it's a tough call right now, because we've got so much, so many expenses related to Hurricane Irma, that I don't know where we're going to end up at the end of the year this year. I would expect that we would be a break even or perhaps a small loss at this point.
Because that'll affect our fund balance going into next year as well.
Yes, it will. Thank you. Great point.
Great. Now he's not going to sleep even more tonight. Anything else for Jerry? All righty, let's move on. Jerry, thank you. We do appreciate it. Keep us updated. Brian, turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that we wanted to do tonight, too, was to give you a report on what's been accomplished at the golf course. If you remember back in March of last year, the city purchased the golf course, and we also brought on down-to-earth to manage the course for us, Mr. Nick Dunleavy, our Business Development Manager, is here tonight to tell you about what's been accomplished over the first year, and then to tell you a little bit about what's coming up in the following years.
Amazing. It's been almost a year already.
I'll bring Nick up.
Nick, how are you?
How you doing?
Doing great.
Thanks for having me in.
And Council, if you want to, what's up on the screen is what's the attachment provided in your agenda as well.
Thank you, Brian.
So overall, it's been almost a year. Very positive experience for me, and hopefully for those that are using the golf club. Our goal's always been to raise the conditions of a golf club to a condition that matches the surrounding beauty of the city and the neighborhoods. And we've taken some big steps toward that. There's still some way to go, but what we've accomplished so far is more than I'd hoped. So some of the improvements, I'll run through the list real quickly here, and thanks to the city for your part in it. We've had the parking lot resurfaced. We have new landscaping coming for the parking lot any day now, I think. Clubhouse has been re-roofed. The pump house has been refurbished. The golf course irrigation system's been completely overhauled, and I can't tell you how bad the old one was. That was something that was absolutely critical to what's going on over there. During that irrigation upgrade, we added irrigation to the UCFTs that were added a few years ago for the benefit of the UCF players.
Did those not have irrigation?
No.
Wow. Did they, with a hose, or how do they do it?
I don't think they were going out with hoses either.
They never contained them.
Yeah, they haven't been in good shape for a long time.
They were green the first year that they were built.
That was about it.
Yeah. Sand bunkers have been completely restored, drainage, new sand. We changed the design of them to make the course more player-friendly and more enjoyable, hopefully for a broader spectrum of players. Better golf course maintenance program. Course conditions have improved considerably. We brought in some new equipment to take care of the golf course, added new amenities, such as new cups, new pins, new flags, little things, but they make a difference to the overall experience. We got a new fleet of golf carts in, in keeping with our UCF-friendly theme. They are black with gold logos. Improved product selection in the golf shop. New point-of-sale system, which also included, it gives us better e-marketing tools, and also gave us new hardware throughout, which was a big need also. Upgraded some golf course signage, refreshed the clubhouse landscaping. We're now also taking care of the UCF practice facility, their golf practice facility down at the end of the range, which I think it just makes sense for everybody involved.
Your company used to do that.
We did it a while ago and actually pulled out of it.
Right.
But they remembered that we'd done a good job before, so.
Well, that's how we found you, is through that.
Is that right? Interesting, okay. I thought it was the unbelievable presentations we made.
Oh, that, too.
Junior programs over there are really second to none. The staff over there, Julie and Alex, were doing an amazing, amazing job of running junior programs over there. That continues and continues to expand, which is great, because we're really growing players for future, for the golf course. We've done a ton of tree trimming, which I feel bad for the guys that do it, because once it's done, you can't tell it was done. But there's been a lot of work done on almost every hole in the golf course. We're going to bring a tree company to do some stuff that we couldn't reach ourselves in the coming weeks. And we've added four new TVs to the grill room. We had, as you may or may not remember, there was two tube TVs still there when we took it over. Some future things that are on my wish list, certainly, is some repainting in the clubhouse, some new chairs in the clubhouse, you know, patio furniture for the patio outside, refresh the locker rooms and the restrooms. We still have a little bit of damage from the hurricane, not hurricane. During the summer, when the roof was being redone, we had one of those two-hour Dell uses while the whole thing was opened up, and it rained out of every light fixture in the place, almost. So there's still a little bit of damage there. Cart Pass, everybody knows, have some repairs required, and the maintenance building. But I'm grateful for what we've done so far and what's been funded so far. It's certainly made my job easier. Golf Now has a program called Golf Advisor, which is a reviewing program for golf courses. The all-time number, they have three different categories. The all-time number, which was 70%. They have the last 12-months number, which is 85%, and then our last six-months number is 94%. So it's, people are noticing the changes, obviously. In the package here, we have just a little bit of financial information here. We are ahead of the budgets that were approved. We're approximately 3,300 rounds above what was done during the same period last year. And we've taken less money so far than we had planned to. So overall, very positive, but I don't want to say it's a complete home run yet, because there's still a lot of blocking and tackling that has to go on there, and it will go on there. But, you know, when Jerry and I were talking last week, yeah, we've got a nice little cushion there right now, but that can go away, you know, really quickly if you're not on top of things, so. Very pleased with how things are going and expect it to continue, but there's work to be done.
Great. Thank you, Nick. I'll stop on my left. Steve, any questions?
Nick, I just want to say thank you so much. I hear, so, I'm not a golfer, but I am a sports person, so, you know, I watch it sometimes and whatever. But the golfers that are out there, they, the place is amazing. I think from where we were when we first started thinking about buying it to where it is today, it's just like night and day. So I think it was a good decision. Like you said, there's still some things to do, but eventually, I mean, I can just see it already, you know, this will be the premier place around here, you know, or even for miles around, maybe not like a Bay Hill or something like that, one of these ones that are, they play big tournaments, but you guys are doing good. I did go out there, walk around, and the place looks amazing. So, I mean, just, you know, hats off, keep going.
We had our busiest, I shared this earlier with a couple of folks, but we had our busiest weekend ever. You know, we did over 600 rounds Friday through Sunday this past weekend, so.
Yeah, that's amazing. See, if I could get Minton and Burton to teach me how to play golf, you know, I can do everything else.
No, you want Minton to teach you.
That I don't know how to play, but really, I think it was a great, great move, and we're on our way somewhere special with it, so keep going.
Thank you.
Keith is good. He's really good.
Bob?
Can we get the financial results from October 1st through February 2018? I just want to see, in this fiscal year, where we're at, and what we have budgeted for, for this fiscal year as opposed to since inception.
Mr. Buzat, and we can certainly provide-
Okay.
Megan, anything?
Well, Mr. Boop, I answered most of my questions, but going forward, I would like to possibly discuss if we could have money, instead of going straight from, you know, the stormwater fund to, say, a pump, if it could stop off in the golf course enterprise fund first. It would psychologically soothe me to think we're tracking things a little bit better, because we paid for, for example, the parking, straight from our parking fund versus from the golf course fund. So it makes it a little bit harder to track what we're investing in the golf course. At the end of the day, though, I've heard the same great feedback as everybody else, so rock on.
Thank you. Keith?
Good sports analogy, tied in home runs with blocking and tackling. So keeps with the sports theme. I think we're, one from bogey golf to we're moving towards par golf in what we're doing.
If we get one more, which we will, one more growing season, which is the summertime, you know, I think we got from the center line out, we made a lot of progress, and then the areas on the side still, you know, have some work. So after this summer, I think we'll be all the better.
I think the only suggestion I would make, and I did play the courses up in St. Augustine at the Golf Hall of Fame, the pace of play is only going to make it better. If you can speed up the pace of play, that's going to add revenue, because you're going to be able to put more people out there. That's the only thing I've seen in the last six months.
Do you think it's good enough to have an open house yet? I know we talked about that maybe for, like, last October or something?
Yes.
It's time? I think it would be great. I'm not a golfer, so I've been out there some, but I think other people would be encouraged maybe try it if they saw it.
We're still battling what has been true there in the past. There's not, there isn't a day goes by where somebody doesn't go up to me and say, "I swore I was never coming back here," but that's good now, so.
People tell me that every week. I've played with people that were members at other courses nearby, over in Orange County, that live in Twin Rivers. They left, and now they're back as members. So that's a very positive-
Bob, I'm sorry, it looked like you had a question.
No, I was just going to go back to the open house. The only issue that I have with an open house is it's lost revenue if we stop play on the course for that.
You could do it.
Sunset.
So I may not, we may not stop play. Maybe we do a good rate on a Sunday to get people out there. You know, get some, maybe get a smoker and get some food going, or get some kid stuff going on the range.
Right, keep the golfers going around the course-
I don't think we have to give, we don't have to give the day away.
Let everybody else see.
Is there a time when, like, before you start going, like sunrise or sunset, where people could go out and it's just too late to start a game of golf?
Yeah, we do one in the afternoon or something.
Yeah, something like that, because saying, come on and see it, but you can't actually go see the grass.
That's okay to do early in the morning, if the sun's out.
Yeah, not early, but, you know, tail end of the day, maybe even on a Friday. I've seen a lot of stuff on Facebook about come and have a veggie burger and sweet potato fries. Well, not that, but I know y'all do have those. I love that stuff. But maybe have it be the tail end of Friday, someday really, really late when it's, yeah, see, now the time has changed.
When the mosquitoes are coming out.
Exactly.
We need to get through this busy period now. I mean, we have-
When's not busy, then? Hopefully, it'll always be busy. So you almost just have to pick a day and say-
Tapers off in the summer.
Yeah, it tapers off.
When it gets hot.
In the summertime.
Okay. It's hard to play out there in 95 degree weather. You've got to put a little more light in.
Do a summertime picket, maybe. You guys figure it out. But, you know, to Bob's point, try to minimize revenue loss.
Is there any plans to start an academy for adults, or teach an academy? Or some more adult program? I know you-
It kind of already exists. They do a lot of kids, but we're teaching adults, too.
All right.
What's the situation with the foot golf? Is that still going on, or?
Foot golf is suspended.
Okay.
Good.
It gives more people a chance to use the course. There's something good about that.
No.
It wasn't a problem.
Doesn't mean you can't do it. I just don't see-
Not at the same time.
Not at the same time. If there's a time, so, period in the summer?
I actually saw firsthand, for the first time, we had an outing that we left the stuff out for. So we had a, you know, from 2:00 to 4:00, it was an outing for foot golf, and the people that saw it were really aggravated. I don't personally-
They were just aggravated to see it?
Yep.
Even though they weren't there playing?
Didn't affect them, but they're, they said, "I stopped coming here because of that."
Huh.
I don't really understand it, but that's the attitude.
That's still ingrained, and the frustration of having to hit through kids running across the course and the danger of it is still ingrained in a lot of people, including me. So, yeah, if it's, if the front nine's closed and there's players on the back nine, that's one thing, and we'll go play the front nine.
Yeah, the holes aren't even in the ground anymore.
Okay. The other alternative is to make a course over at Shane Kelly. We've got a lot of property at the course track that could be laid out very nicely and let them play out there.
Good alternative. Nick, just one final question on the P and L, the basic, real basic P and L we have here. What do you have listed, what's in expenses? You know, you're showing expenses of $1,001,000. What is included in there? Is that just operating expenses, or is that?
That's all.
Is that maintenance? Is that improvements? Is that?
Not improvements. It's, except for the stuff we paid for. I mean, we paid for some of the things, but none of the projects are in there.
Okay, so that's just your operating expense, mowing it, fertilizing it, irrigating it, your employees?
Correct.
The basic maintenance of the basic facilities each and every day. That's what's in that number.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so Jerry, there was a comment made that we're not tracking the expenses from the other accounts. I'm going to safely assume we are. Where's Jerry?
Yes, sir, we're tracking all the expenses associated with all accounts.
Right, so no matter where they, right, if somebody asked you how much we spent on the golf course, you can hit a button and pull it up.
I mean, I'll be there, but it might take five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. I would assume that you were tracking everything. All righty.
So here's the $1,000 question. When we were looking at this, and the comment was made that, well, the course would make money if it didn't have a big note that it had to pay off. And we took the note away because we bought it with the stormwater fees. If you were standing alone right now, would we be making money?
Right now, no. We're budgeted to hit that level in the third year.
Third year? Okay. Because of all the improvements we made?
That's a part of it, yeah.
But taking away the, just take away the cost of the improvements, we're still doing very well, aren't we?
We're still, we are losing money on the golf course. The improvements aren't included in that number. Operations loses money as we, it didn't last month and this month, but- this month, but overall for the year, we're still, we still have to grow the revenue side.
All right, we've only been in it a year, and I mean, look at the increases, the ratings, you know, now we get a strategic partner on board, which I know they're still down there looking around, and, you know, you just have to make nice with the golf coach. Nick?
It's been good.
Okay. Make nice. Make, make the greens roll at a 12 for him wherever he wants. Tommy could play them, Keith couldn't, so.
Took me a while this weekend to play those 12 greens up in St. Augustine.
Like rocks.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, I mean, I, I hope that, you know, nobody goes away from this meeting, you know, when they hear you say that we lost money, but look, we knew this was going to happen. You had a, you had a completely, if not totally dead-on life support golf system, you know, golf course that nobody was really caring about. They were cutting the grass, and we're good. And it's not going to come back over time, but, I mean, it's going to come back over time, but it's not going to happen in a month. You know, like you said, in year three, we'll, we'll, we'll make some money. I mean, what Keith just said was really good. People who were not members there now have come back and played, said, "Wow, I'm coming back." And, you know, it has a reputation of not being a great course through the years, so people went and got other memberships. It's going to take them some time to figure it all out, but once they see it and they come back, wow. So, I, I don't want anybody to take away, wow, this was a bad, a bad decision.
It's happening a little ahead of the rate we thought it would.
Yeah, I mean, so you're, it's going to take a little while. Yeah, doing good.
All righty.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could ask Mr. Boop a quick question. I, I think from our discussion just before the meeting, so we, we bought the course for roughly five and a half million, correct? And then between moving stuff and directly from the enterprise fund, and then from authorized places to golf course related improvements, are we at about 1.1 million dollars of additional investment? That's kind of what my calculation was. But then there's another about 150,000 authorized for this budget cycle, if, and, and it's more of a question.
We purchased the golf course for 5.5 million. I will, the initial purchase, we transferred 500,000 dollars over to the water sewer. Okay? In association with that, they, we've also put a loan in place between the water sewer fund and the golf course fund for 600,000 dollars, and that was for the irrigation improvements. Okay? We have also put a loan in place between the stormwater fund.
I can't hear you.
Oops, excuse me. We also put a loan in place between the stormwater fund and the golf course fund for the irrigation bunker improvements and a number of other items, which total 500,000 dollars. To date, on that loan, we've only brought over 250,500 dollars. I've not authorized any more improvements.
But then the roof was from a different location?
Right, the roof was paid for by stormwater. I think that was about 40, Drew, do you know that number? 48,000, something like that? But that was paid for out of stormwater funds, but we were paid out of closing those funds for the roof repair.
Okay.
So, that was kind of like a wash. It really didn't impact the stormwater fund at all.
And was that the same thing for the air conditioning remediation, and that, that was all part of that one?
The?
Big thing? Okay.
Was it, okay.
Drew's saying yes.
Oh, for the mold? Okay, yeah, right, got it.
That was, that was taken from the savings as well.
Yes.
Okay. And then the paving was like, what, was it 90, 65? I don't remember.
About 58,000.
Okay, and that was taken directly from?
Fund 304, which is the third gen sales tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What other park in the system do we have, do we have an 80% cost recovery on?
What, I'm sorry, say that again?
Which other park?
System?
In all of our park system, do we have an 80% cost recovery on?
I don't know if one exists in the United States, sir.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right.
If there's not that big of a cost, if it's that great of a cost recovery, we could just close it down a day and let everybody use it. It's losing money anyway, but maybe not for long, hopefully not for long.
You do realize that every park we have?
Loses money, I do.
Okay.
30% cost recovery.
Just want to make sure that you know.
That's later down on the agenda.
All right. All right, moving on. Mr. Cobb, back over to you. Item number three.
Thank you, Mayor.
Doing good on talking.
At your February 5th meeting, you asked, council asked that we put a discussion item for tonight regarding administrative fees. Councilman Pollak had, had been approached regarding fees that are charged at the cultural center, and so we put together a, we put together the fees for you that we charge at the cultural center. I think we'd probably get to let Councilman Pollak explain the, what he, the input that he received from, from the citizens. Every year, we obviously, we go through an evaluation of our fees, and we try to address if there's new activities, or if we need to revise the fees in any ways, and have that fee resolution for you as part of the adoption of the budget. Tonight, we just want to get your input, if there's any changes that we need to be looking at for this fee resolution as we have it right now.
Okay, great. Councilman?
Well, I went through all the, the items here and the, and the agenda, and this was, this was what I was looking for. This information's good with the, the fee structure that's budgeted for fiscal year 17, 18. The, the issue I was having was, you know, is there a sweet spot to where, because we don't, I mean, the cultural center is designed to be more of a, you know, more for weddings, it's for, for nicer events, so it's not for birthday parties and stuff, so there, there needs to be some, somewhat of a higher fee so that you, you can prevent some of that. But, but for like bar mitzvahs and, and sweet 16s and stuff, the, the fees seem just, you know, slightly higher. One of the, one of the things I was, you know, one of the things I was looking for is trying to find a, you know, a comparison to local venues in the area that are similar, to, to see where we stand on that. And, I mean, if we're in the ballpark, which I believe, I spoke with you, and, and you seem to think that we are, or that, that you said we are, which I'm fine with. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, too far out. The one thing I, I really would like is something to be done with the catering. I know we, we have a contract in place that, you know, to, to, to allow people to cater, and I think that we can open it up. I mean, when the first RFP occurred, or request, it wasn't an RFP, it was an RFQ, right? When that first one occurred, we basically said anybody that signs a contract can become a caterer. And I think that we need to continue that, just instead of going out, like anybody that wants to sign the contract, meets the requirements, I think that they should be allowed to cater events there, as long as they have the proper insurance and everything else. Because there's some, some local businesses or local restaurants and that, that would like to participate, and they're, they're continually waiting for another RFQ, which I don't believe needs to even occur, as long as we say, "This is it, you know, take it or leave it, this is the contract." Mr. Green, do you, do you agree with that, or do we have to go out for an RFQ and RFP for, for additional caterers for the, the venue?
Are you, there's different ways to do it. I mean, you can do an RFQ, an RFP, you can set, establish criteria that anybody has to meet, and once they meet it, then they're a certified caterer or whatever. Any of those ways work, but I think the idea is, the main idea is to have all the insurance in place, qualifications in place, so that you don't have to go through that motion every time.
Right.
Every time there's an event.
Right. Does that, does that make sense, Drew?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with council, we did do an RFP when we initially did the, the thing. We're in, presently, right now, we're in year three. It was a, the initial term of the contract with the eight groups, actually, there was initially nine, one has dropped out since we started the, the catering process with the, with the opening of the event center. The agreement was basically a three-year agreement, and then after the initial term, the agreement will, shall be automatically renewed on an annual basis for a maximum of two, two additional years. That actually is this July. So, per the contract, there's a maximum term for the contract for all renewals of a five-year period, unless the city decides to at our own or council's request. We can do a, provide a written notice, which is 90 days. So, if council actually, if I'm, if my timing's right, we would need to actually let the other eight caterers know next month, the first next month, that we might be revisiting this and going back out to an RFP, to be able to let them know, because from how I read this, now Lonnie wrote the contract, so I can let him, you know, look at it, to, you know, because I know he doesn't have it in front of him. But if, if I'm understanding the contract right, if we do not notify them within the next 90 days as of next month, then it's automatically renewal for another two years. It's a, it's an automatic renewal, but I'll let.
Who, who are our caterers, right?
We basically have, right now, Puff and Stuff, River City Catering, Arthur's, Big City Catering, Streets was the one that pulled out, Living's Catering, Events by John Michael, Four Rivers, and Miller's Oviedo Ale House, which I think Millers actually have pulled out, too.
So, we're at the end of the three years, right?
We're coming up in July, July the 8th.
Why would we limit them at all? I think that's what you're saying, right?
Well, my, my, one of my questions is, and I know you haven't reviewed it, so I'm just, I'm just kind of putting it out there. I don't, I don't expect an immediate answer. Is there anything in there that prevents us from having other caterers?
That's what I'm just looking for, actually. But to answer the first question, it's renewed automatically for another one year.
Right.
And then be automatically for a second, one year to meet the maximum.
And I think we make some revenue off of this.
So, we, we create a monopoly and they pay us to be part of a monopoly system? Well, not a monopoly, but a ninopoly?
They each, yeah, any of the catering services, they pay the city 25%.
Oh.
Well, you got to remember it now, they're using our facilities, our kitchen.
Yeah.
I mean, there's things that are being used.
How much do we make off of that? I'm, I'm not sure if it's worth it to limit, just to get the 25%, if it would make everybody really happy not to have it.
Well, no, I mean, but, but the contract's there, so we.
So, if they agreed to give the 25%, what does it matter? Yeah.
Exactly. So, that's my, that's my question. I, I'm just trying to see, you know, did we enter into an agreement where we're, we're basically telling them that we're not going to have any other caterers?
No, I don't think these are exclusive.
Okay, so, so, so my, my, my question is, is can we just open, open them up and just add it, and then not, you know, if, if, if other restaurants are, restaurants or caterers are willing to sign the contract, have the proper insurance, and give the, you know, give the percentage, why not?
Yeah.
Most facilities that you go to, to rent or lease, only have a certain number of folks that you can choose from. You know, it's not a, a open free-for-all, to be honest. Now, the reason why, I don't know, I'm not in that business, but, you know, that, that's the way it is. You go to Lake Mary, you've got, you know, five caterers.
But they, but, I mean, there, we, we have stringent requirements. I mean, there's stringent insurance requirements and everything, and I could see, I mean, you're not going to get, you know, just some, you know, startup caterer coming here because they're not going to be able to meet those requirements. But I, you know, I don't see why there, you know, there couldn't be other ones.
Well, you know, as you, you know, your point, your point's well taken, because you have a lot of new restaurants coming to town, but I, it kind of brings me to like what we do with commercial, you know, waste haulers. You know, if they, they make an application to Joe, and they're willing to pay the franchise fees and everything, then they, they just come in. We have like, what, 15 or 20?
Like that.
We have a lot of them, so why couldn't you do the same thing with the restaurants? You know, you have a, a set, I think Lonnie was saying this, you have a set policy like we have, if you meet it and you're willing to do this, and then you really got to leave it up to the people who are renting the facility. Here are the 10 choices, and let them pick it, you know, and let them go, because I, I know, I think I know where you're going. There's a lot of new people coming to town and they want a shot at it, but they got to be able to meet every guideline and be willing to do what you want. I mean, I think that's fair.
Right.
Keith?
Is, is there a difference between a caterer that pays the 25% and uses the facility, and someone that cooks it at their restaurant and brings it in and puts it on a table?
Well, yeah, and basically, the facility, how it is right now, within the rental guidelines, Monday through Thursday, prior to certain times, any group can actually utilize, I mean, for rentals, anybody can bring in any food groups during Monday through Thursday.
Pizza or whatever.
However, they do not have the right to use the kitchen. So, they can bring food in, they just cannot prep.
That's fine.
The cater, as part of the catering contract, because the caterers also, when they get, when they get a, you know, a group that, that brings their services in, they also have to provide deposits on usage of the equipment per event, which they get that deposit back if they tear something up, okay? So, that's something that we would have to take into thought for the future, too. The other, the other thing I know we discussed was the, the level of service that we, as a city, and I believe you as council, want to keep at that facility. That facility was kept in mind to be a higher standard, and the thing, the one concern staff has, is that if we open it up to any catering service, you know, are we going to possibly bring down the standards of what council might have thought that facility was being used for? Now, there again, if it's, you know, you bring up a point about birthday parties and things like that, not everybody necessarily wants to utilize a high-end caterer for a birthday, for a 16-year-old birthday party, or even someone who's turning 90, that type of thing. So, or 60. So, but, you know, that, that's a choice of council. I mean, once again, you know, we, we do have the out clause that we can notify all the catering services and decide if we want to get another direction.
Found the sentence I was looking for. The contractor acknowledges that the city may retain other goods and/or service providers provide the same goods and/or services for city projects, so it's not exclusive.
Okay. The other, the other item on this fee schedule, and I know there's differences of opinion on this, when someone rents the entire park, the parking lot should be, I feel like the parking lot should be included.
I'm, I'm going to always disagree with everybody on that, but whatever the decision is, I'll go with it. I, the number one complaint that comes to me, and it comes to the office of mayor, whoever that person may be, is why am I paying at what they perceive to be a public event, the park and a public parking lot? It, I, I get inundated, and then I send them to Drew, or I send them to the organizers.
Because we, we've put a requirement on, on Drew to recover a certain amount of money per event, and that's one way he can make that recovery.
Yeah, but we don't get it.
A separate, a separate fee to rent the parking lot in addition to it? That, that I could maybe wrap my brain around.
Well, there's, okay, so you've got, you've got city events, city activities, and then you have non-city activities, for instance, you know, Great Day or, or barbecue blowout. They, you can build in, you know, we, we can maybe adjust fees or something, but I feel like if you rent the entire park, you're renting that parking lot. And however you utilize that parking lot, whether you want to make it free, or if you want to charge it, it's, it's yours to do to offset your other costs.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, Bob.
Yes.
Where does the park begin and end? Because there's certain groups that want roads, too.
No, the park ends.
I'm, I'm just asking.
No, I, I feel like the, the, the street.
There's a certain group out there right now wants to close up Mike Roberto Way also, because they feel it's part of the park. Where does the park begin and end?
I think it's just that main street there, that, that goes to the parking lot that goes in front of.
So, all the way to Oviedo Boulevard?
And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just, this is all food for thought.
From Oviedo Boulevard, all the way to, what is it, City?
So, the first, the Maple Street entrance of Oviedo Boulevard? Now, this is an interesting discussion, because I, I feel like it starts by Maple Street, and it goes down, and it ends at Oviedo Boulevard, but I don't consider the road with a stoplight by Panera. I don't consider that part of, like, you can never close that, I would think.
Basically, what you would.
Only until you, until you get to the circle part.
Would you close down for like the, the 5Ks? You know, you close it down.
Well, that, that road gets closed down at Simple Greek. That's city walkways. Well, that, that road gets closed down at Simple Greek. That's city walkways, is that what it is?
Yeah, from City Plaza to, to Oviedo Boulevard.
Yeah, so City Plaza gets-
Leave the other streets.
Yeah, but you got to get past-
Starbucks first.
Yes.
Right, so you get past Starbucks and Mike Roberto.
Yeah, that three-way's got to be open.
Just, this is, anytime you close a public street, there's issues. Anytime you tell people you can't park in a public parking lot, there's issues. Anytime you tell people you have to pay to park in a public parking lot, that without an ordinance or a system, you got, there's issues.
It, it's just that my email box lights up, guys. I mean, I'm just like, you know, whatever y'all decide, it's not a problem. I'll just give them Bob's cell phone number when they complain to me. I'll say, "This was brought up by Councilman Pollock."
Okay. I just, I, I feel like that-
I, I understand. We, I'm making light of a situation that we have to, as Lonnie just said. We, we got to eventually wrap our arms around it. You know, whether we'll get there tonight, I don't, I don't know, but, you know.
You know what? I'll tell you what, when you, when you rent something, you rent somebody's condo, the owner can't tell you what channel you're going to watch. So I'm agreeing with you. If somebody comes in and rents the park and it is a private facility, and they rent that park, they should be able to do what they want with the parking lot. I agree 100%. On the other hand, when it's our event, of course, we should not be charging for parking. But when somebody's paying that money to rent that facility, you can't tell them, I mean, other than not breaking the law, you know, they're running their, their, their day. So I agree with you.
I think that-
But I also hear what the mayor's saying. You get calls, and it's a tough thing, but we have to just, you know, you have to, you have to make the call. If it's a private event, it's not our event. They rented our facility. Once you rent something, that gives you some legal rights to do certain things. You can't tell somebody what to do in the house that they're renting from you, inside the house, unless they're destroying it.
I think it, it comes down to the definition of-
What's the inside of the house?
Yeah, well, yeah. So you got to figure that out. But I, I know where you're going. I mean, private events are tough. Our events, you know, it's-
Well, how do, how do, how do we, you know, do as we say, not as we do, sort of?
No, no, I, I think that our events, I, I think that, I mean, that's, that's a cost recovery method for our events. I mean, it's, if it's a free-
City events, too, you think?
I, I think, I know, I know. But, but I think that it's a way to, to recover some of the costs. I mean, if you go through down further into these, these agendas, you'll see, you know, some of the, the funds-
I'd like to see another city that gives up a public parking lot to a private entity to charge for events.
Yeah. Maybe the city should be charging at these events instead of the people renting them.
I was in St. Augustine this weekend, and parking was horrendous, because it's, and, and I would, I would actually suggest that if you wanted to park in St. Augustine, you paid a city parking fee. It was probably a public parking lot, you paid to park there, just to be able to-
Like a parking meter type of thing?
Well, that was, that was my next comment.
Now, now, what I would suggest, too, is that to encourage people not to park down there, provide a shuttle service. Maybe a, you know, a little folly or something. They can park somewhere else and we'll trolley them in.
And I fully understand that the groups that rent out the whole park and, you know, pay a decent fee, and they're all raising money for good causes, and I'm not picking on the groups, I'm just picking on the concept. You know, how do we, we got, we have to come up with, with a plan that everybody can agree on.
Mayor, if I could, first of all, I want to, I stand corrected, it's not 25, I'm going back catering, I apologize. It's not 25%. We charge 25% on our recreational contracts. It's 10% for the caterers per event, so I wanted to let council know.
25% sounded rich, but I, I figured you were getting it.
Initially, we, initially we looked at that because we were going to go across the board, and a lot of the caterers said, hey, we've never been hit with 25% fees across.
Well, you said one dropped out. Any one of those seven that has risen to the top that most people, especially for weddings, have-
Yeah, I, I will tell you, Four Rivers-
Yeah.
Is utilized a ton. I know Puff and Stuff has, has been utilized. There's some of the caterers that routinely don't even, haven't been utilized on a high level. I know Four Rivers has, and the other-
I know Mission wants to get in.
Yeah, well, there's been, Panuzo has requested to get in. Juan has called me a dozen times. In fact, Juan told me he kicked himself several times that he didn't get his information in in time.
All right, so it's going to open up, it sounds like in July or something, get it opened, and-
But it doesn't even have to be till July, does it? Under the contract, it'd be now.
But the only thing that they can't do now is boil the pasta in the kitchen.
Yeah, I mean, right now-
So they could bring their own food in.
If we, if we ended up, if council decided to bring in additional caterers, the, basically, the catering is in, doing evening events and weekend events. Monday through Thursday, daytime events, you can, anybody can be utilized, they just cannot use the kitchen.
Okay, so it's only evening time, you have to do what it-
Evening and weekends.
Interesting.
And that's, and that's how a lot of facilities, you know, higher-level standard facilities for weddings, receptions, and things like that, they do it in this process because they try to keep their standards of the type of catering groups that they want to be utilized.
We don't follow it for ourselves, because we've had Rockin' Brews in there for the ugly sweater party.
Well, now, that's not, that's for our own programs, and that's, that's also as a sponsor, them coming in donating food and things.
Okay.
So it's, it's a little bit different.
Yeah, and our kitchen doesn't have stoves, it's got warming stuff, and it's got, yeah.
It's a prep kitchen.
Yeah, because Streets used to park their truck out back, and he'd cook on the truck, right, and then bring it in.
And that's what a lot of them do. Either bring it from the restaurant, in Womers, or cook onsite and then bring it in. They do prep.
Well, Drew, if you can figure out a way to open it up, I mean, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. And make it work, and, you know, make the standards if they're as stringent as Bob is saying, and I certainly trust his opinion if he read it. You know, I, I don't, I don't think any one of us would object to that, would we, guys?
Okay.
Keith, you're okay with that?
I wanted to add also, Mayor, you'd mentioned about parking. City of Crystal River put in parking in two of their parks a few years back. Since then, they've added three additional ones. It was hit with some resistance initially. Now, it's, it's, like I said, they've added meters in three additional parks. Over the last few years, they've brought in over $278,000 of revenue, in which a ton of it has been utilized for improvements to the park system, as well as hiring employees, and they still have an excess of $80,000 in their coffers.
That would kick me off.
Let me take you back in history for a second. Didn't you try to charge for parking one time at OSC?
I requested council to consider the same as we do for our summer rec, as far as hiring, I mean, charging for each person coming in for concessions, and council was opposed to it at OSC, as well as Shane Kelly. A dollar per head for every car that came in, or any participant coming in, to offset for concessions.
I didn't dream that. I seem to-
Not parking for concessions.
I seem to remember this like 10 or 12 years ago.
What we were looking at doing for concessions is that each person coming in to the rec facility, OSC or Shane Kelly, every person, if a car of four people came in, $4, and then they got a $4 coupon to spend at the concession. So in a roundabout way, the whole idea was to try to raise, because how many people go and just get a bottle of water? So they'd go and they end up spending additional funds at the concession stand. We do that presently still at the pool, and we bring in additional revenue each year because of that.
Right, at the pool, you charge for them to bring in a cooler, or just-
Yeah, we, we can charge, we, we charge each person a dollar to get in, then we give them a coupon. And they can accumulate those coupons over the summer and use, if they come 40 times, they can use $40 at one time if they choose to.
Well, if you want to do that, just disconnect my cellphone and go right ahead and do it.
Parking meter, parking meter, everyone pays. Money maker.
Especially in, where the David Weekly homes are on Oviedo Boulevard.
Yeah, visit somebody there.
I think we should put it at his home.
Don't actually, they would look good up there. That's right.
We need to run in front of your house, Bob.
Nice black ones.
Those remain free.
All right, well, you got to, you work on that, and if you bring something back, and things have changed on council, who knows? Parking, I, I really, Lonnie, we're going to need some help, some guidance, and we got to figure this out as a policy issue. I mean, more than a legal issue, so to speak, but, both sides of the argument have merits. I mean, if you rent the, rent the facility, you got the lot, but, you know, then if we have our events, what stops us from doing it and raising some revenue? You know, but we'll see.
You know, I think the issue, too, where you, where you can, you can almost, you know, get your, your hands around it, is if, you know, if you look at Great Day, you know, in April next month, they're going to have this big award thing, and they're going to hand out all this money they raised for the people in the community. And I think citizens, when they come in and they know it's an event that's giving back, they're okay. I wouldn't want to see us, or anybody, charging for parking on a Saturday afternoon. It's a regular day, and we're just enjoying the park, that'd be dumb. But a big event like that, where they're trying to give back, cheering for-
And we should charge only for bicycle parking.
Absolutely, of course. But, you know, you just, there's a lot of things to consider.
Rent locks.
Right, we'll put a, put a little speed pass on the bikes.
Yeah, yeah. That's actually a bad idea.
But I think like a Great Day, I don't think anybody has an issue with that, because they, the people who live in Oviedo are very smart, and, you know, they, they understand that this money is going right back, and, you know, the, the award dinner they're having, I think it's April 15th or something next, next month, if you get a chance to come out and see what they do, I don't mind paying a few dollars to park, because I know it's going back to some kids, but I wouldn't mind if it was something else, you know, like a regular day. So you got to just kind of figure it out.
But, I mean, the, the city budget's a zero-sum game, so if you're generating revenue from the parking for the people that use the parking lot, then the people, the taxpayers that aren't using the parking lot, aren't subsidizing them. So, so you're-
You mean charging for our events as well?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so it's, you know, it's, it's a zero-sum game when you, when you look at it, so it's more of a, you know, the people that are using it are paying for it.
Presently, what we would probably like to charge would be for our preferred seating at certain events to be able to add to a preferred seating pass parking, and that would be considered part of that parking. We have, in the past, as council is aware, we have charged for some parking for events. We stopped that this past year. There are things that we think that if we charge for parking, we could bring in quite a few extra $1,000 per event, which would be additional cost recovery. Now, there's some events that I would, Brian and I have had this discussion, there's some events, our programs, I don't think that it's even feasible for us to even take the time of putting staff out there to charge for. But larger events, I know in discussions with Mr. Cobb, I've been to a lot of events in a lot of states, and everywhere I go, I end up having to pay for parking. Some were either by a parking meter system, or someone standing out taking $10 or $20, that type of thing. So it, it is something to think about.
The lifestyle change, the folks aren't used to it.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Should we charge for parking at the golf course? See if we can recover that pavement?
Parking meters.
All right, we beat this dead. Bob, did you get everything out that you wanted to?
I did.
This is your item.
So this is going to happen before July, right? Letting other people hop in if they want?
The catering thing, are you guys going to sit down and talk about it?
I'm going to, I'm going to, okay. Yeah, I want to sit down with Mr. Cobb and go, and sit down with, with our attorney and make sure that everything's kosher, and then we will go forward.
Mr. Cobb, are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm good.
There you go. All right, next item, recreational program and special event cost recovery. Drew, you might as well not go anywhere. I have a funny feeling this might involve you a little bit. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it back over to you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. At your February 19th meeting, you asked that we place this item on this agenda to, to talk about our cost recovery programs for our recreation programs. And right now, our cost recovery goals are 30% for programs and 50% for events.
Our special events.
Special.
Our special events.
And, yes, our special events. And so we want to, we haven't really had a discussion of this for quite a long time, and so we wanted to get your input on this tonight, and also hear some of your concerns, so.
All right, Mr. Cobb, who wants to lead off? Anybody? I don't know who asked for this item. Keith, you have any? I'll, I'll just start with you, because you made a face.
Well, maybe it is time to start looking at it. I think 30% is a little low. We're, we're looking at a pretty tight budget year. I don't know how we calculate that. Does, does the football, soccer, baseball leagues only pay for 30%? Or do they, do we recover more percentage, and then other events, we provide at 100% subsidized? I don't know how that calculation works.
Start with the rec programs. Tell, tell us how the, the rec programs get to 30%.
Okay, well, as, what we do is we look at department-wide. Presently, as we stand right now, at this time of year, department-wide, with all maintenance included, we're exactly at 30% cost recovery. Now, with that being said, it's a little bit, you know, misleading, because with all maintenance, that's all city facility maintenance, which means includes these buildings, City Hall Annex, public safety, fire, public works. So once you start taking all those different areas out, of the maintenance out, and it's like I've discussed with Mr. Cobb today, we're looking at some different formulas to actually come up with an actual percentage, a higher percentage, because once you start pulling some of these items out, it's not pure cost recovery, because they don't have anything dealing directly with our, with individual programs. Parks, yes, maintain the fields, yes, but when you start pulling, when you start looking at some of the things that's within our budget, our revenues start inching up. And right now, with where our, we're at with our revenue, we're not even at our high points yet. We don't go into our high point until summer months and things like that.
Well, Drew, let's get a clarification from yourself, Mr. Boop, or Mr. Cobb. So what, what I'm hearing you say, and I think we're all hearing you say, is that within your budget, since maintenance falls under parks and rec for all the city facilities, that that is all in your budget?
Mm-hmm.
Raising your budget from, let's just say, $3 million to $4 million, because you got to do maintenance, and then you're having a, we're expecting a 30% cost recovery of $4 million, but your parks and rec and program is usually only $3 million. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because everything's rolled in there?
Yeah, everything's rolled in. So where we're at right now, as of today, we're exactly at 30% of our cost recovery with everything rolled in. If I start extrapolating certain aspects, our cost recovery for recreation parks will continue to escalate.
Well, then that's good. We should keep it in there, and we should raise it to 40%.
And keep all facility maintenance. We can look at that. I'm not opposed to anything.
Let me just make sure Keith does that, because-
I don't think, I'd like to see that break out. I'm not sure how I feel about subsidizing facility maintenance with parks and recs revenue.
Well, that's been my thing, is that I, I feel like that if we're going to look at true cost recovery, then we need to base it on, we need to take the facilities maintenance part of the recreation department and not include that.
And why haven't we done that? Why haven't we done it yet? Because that seems logical to me, that we would want to break that out, because this is a specific goal of city council, is to get 30% recovery from the rec programs.
Well, we're better than that, though.
Yeah, but now it would have to be better than that if we took those out. Then we got to raise it.
And I want, I want council also to understand, what we're, what we do cost recovery right now, it's direct costs, direct costs. It doesn't include all full-time staff, because when you start looking at all full-time staff, they're doing multiple layers of jobs. When you start looking at all the different aspects of everything that comes out of our budgets, there's multi-levels, and so, for example, our, our electrical, our water, it's not just easily, like, for example, the gymnasium aquatic facility, it's all one meter. It's not broken down to where we actually know how many KW, you know, and what the cost is just to run the gym. And so when you start doing that to get an actual cost recovery, you need to know the pure electrical cost for the pool, pool, pure electrical cost for the gymnasium, pure electrical, if you're starting to look at cost recovery per division, not just as a department, that's where I'm kind of going.
Oh, yeah, well, no, you got to look at the-
You could pull out the different, like, this is a different building, you can pull this out of there.
We, we got to remember, we have all, all my electrical budgets in one lump sum for lighting of all the ballparks, basketball courts, parking lot lighting. Everything associated with anything within our parks and rec facilities.
But not City Hall, I think that's-
Yeah, I think it is. Is your, is power for here lumped together? No.
Not, not City Hall, no. Just within the rec and parks.
Right, everything that, everything that belongs to the park and rec department.
Yes.
No, you don't, do you have, you have separate meters for the ballpark lighting versus the aquatic center?
Yes.
So you can break it out, and if you go to the-
But I don't have-
I think what Drew is saying is that he can't break out the gym as opposed to the pool.
Sure you could. Bobby could do that in a minute. Catch Bobby.
Go, Bobby.
Uh, well, during the energy audit with Siemens, that's what Siemens said we should do. Of course, there was a, a cost associated with switching everything over, so we didn't do it.
I, I, in my personal opinion, as long as you're doing it, as Keith just said, as long as we break out, whatever cost doesn't necessarily-
we break out whatever cost doesn't necessarily factor into that, Parks and Rec's actual budget, as long as you take your Parks and Rec budget, I don't care how you figure out your electric bill, but as long as it's only electric for Parks and Rec, then you add up the big number, and then you take in the revenue, and that's, well, I mean, if we get rid of this other maintenance stuff, we have to raise the thirty percent up, but you get my point.
Let's, let's talk about the staff. They, you say they do different roles, and I'm sure they do. But wouldn't Public Works, if they're supporting hurricane repair or cleanup, wouldn't Public Works or someone pay for that rather than Parks and Rec? Or are you paying for that type of stuff out of Parks and Rec?
Well, out of Parks and Rec budget, for example, we pay a fleet maintenance fee for every time a vehicle goes over. We pay a certain amount of money that's going over for repair and maintenance, for staffing.
Well, you should pay for fleet maintenance. If it's your vehicle and it goes over and it gets fixed, that's gonna get charged back to your budget.
But you said they have different roles. If...
Well, I'm saying full-time.
...in here should be paid out of Parks and Rec's fund. It should be paid out of some other facility.
Let Mr. Account jump in here.
Well, the, what I'm hearing all this, I feel like Jerry's gonna need like five more accountants to track all this because it becomes, it comes very burdensome on the accounting department to track everything. Because you're getting into more...
This is the first time I ever heard that finance is an ally. I mean, look at that. Is it nice? There you go.
Well, no, it's, I mean, because it gets in, you get into work orders and allocation of time, and it can get, because then how far do you go? Do you allocate benefits to those employees? And before you know it, you've, you've created this, this monster that, that...
Yeah, you should be able to get the basics out. At least in a room.
And one of the things I will tell council, over the years, since I've been here, we've went from multi-divisions, and one of our goals was to break down, I mean, we used to have facility maintenance in separate divisions, seventy-two-ten, which was nothing but city facilities, and then, or seventy-two-ten was rec facilities, and then seventy-two-nineteen, which was all other city facilities. We combined everything to try to make things easier also for accounting, as well as put all the money in one pot. Same thing that we did seventy-two-twelve this past year because it's a cost center on its own, which is the events, and parks is in there, and custodial services, and things like that.
You know, Drew, listen, for me, I always try to simplify stuff because I hate micromanaging people and, and events. So for me, I think it's sort of a mistake to say, well, let's get back thirty percent, forty percent, because we're just throwing out numbers. Unfortunately, accounting is a tough thing, but I think Britton's on it, on this. You gotta figure out whatever event you have, and you can't worry about what's going outside. You know, it can't just be Parks and Rec that you're trying to recoup. You have police out there, you have fire. Everything that goes into that day that you need to make that event, you all have to sit down and figure that out. That's your old job. And whatever it is, that's the number. We shouldn't be trying to make more on the people. But you also have to take into account the wear and tear on the park for maintenance the following year. You have to figure all these things out. But, you know, I never was really comfortable. Let's make thirty percent, forty percent. Need to figure out what the actual cost is, and once you have that all down, that's what the price is. And you, then you go back to the citizens and say, we charged you exactly what it cost us. We're not here to make money. We're here to make sure we maintain our facilities, that we cover everything that goes with it. But if you have an event out there, and you have ten cops out there, and Lars is out there with his, you gotta cover that all in. So you really don't know what this thirty, forty percent is, you know? So for me, I just try to make it simple. That's for you and Jerry and Kelly and all you to figure out each event, what it cost you, and that's what you charge. And then when the people complain, well, we don't wanna pay this much, you can clearly show them, this is what your event is costing us.
And staff basically, with every program that we do, staff does a cost analysis prior and after. Prior of what we anticipate revenue expenses to be, of course, we'd always hit that on the head because we don't always know exactly how many people are gonna sign up for a program. Our numbers escalate during different time periods of the year. Sponsorships escalate, especially for special events and stuff, for different times of the year. So, yeah, we're kinda always kinda sometimes throwing a, you know, at the dartboard and hoping it sticks and comes in higher. I will tell you, our city, from citywide, nationwide, thirty percent is a very good cost recovery for a rec department. A lot of rec departments are nothing but...
What about that golf course?
Community-based. It's a business.
But we're not counting the initial six and a half million in it, or whatever it is.
Don't worry about it.
But the other, the other thing on this, though, is the cost recovery is not thirty percent on the events. I was looking at this chart. I'm very impressed that some of these are like two hundred seventy-seven percent, or a hundred seventy-eight percent. So a lot of these special events, I was wondering, what happened to the November food truck? How do we not break even or do better on that? Or maybe there was a typo in there. It looked like it was like eighty-one percent cost recovery.
Well, maybe we just had, you know, could have been, it could have rained early.
But so if the vendors decided not to show up last night, did they get their money back? Or how does that work?
And we possibly, for that event, I'd have to ask Sean, and maybe Sean could put some, you know, something to that. I could say possibly we didn't have as many vendors, possibly didn't get as much sponsorship dollars that month. So that's why it could have varied. Our set fee for the food truck is the same set fee per month that we were paid from the food truck provider group. So it's all, you know, vendors and/or sponsorship additional dollars.
Well, on this category, and I'm the one who brought this up wanting to talk about the policy, I think your marching orders so far are fifty percent on this category. So this is attachment two under this item. And sometimes you're like blown out of the ballpark.
Attachment two, though, is...
Does that include more than...
No, attachment two is programs. Attachment one is actually special events.
Okay, so on the programs, what I...
Thirty percent.
On, seriously, you're only...
As of right now...
I would love to see that be like a hundred percent. And if it's not doing it, unless it's something really amazing...
He's at a hundred and twenty-nine percent.
On some of these. But on Carnival of Screams, we're losing sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it's an aggregate. He's at a hundred and twenty-nine point five-two percent on the, on attachment two.
Yeah.
This is just the programs. It's, the Carnival of Screams is not part of that, though. I don't believe.
No, attachment one is our special events.
That's special events.
If you look, well, and what council has, has asked us to do is fifty percent for the entire year. So if we, on the five special events...
We're at sixty percent right now.
Yeah, we're at sixty. So right now, we're, we're coming in higher.
We'd be even better without Carnival of Screams. In light of the whole Parkland thing and the meeting coming up tomorrow, I...
Carnival of Screams came in at fifty-two percent.
I know, but it just does not seem like a positive thing for the city to put its name on.
They love that event.
It's a haunted house at Halloween.
I had never before been until last year. You go inside, it's people chopping other people up, all kinds of...
They love that.
I hear ya, but people do not love when there are school shootings. And for us to participate in providing these images to the kids in our community, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate.
Well, I disagree.
I gotta disagree with that.
That's a different discussion.
Okay. It seems related to the budget and also appropriate timing-wise.
I will tell council that that event has been so popular, that's the reason we added this additional night this past year. Because we, in the past, we have not been able to get all the people in. We've had to actually turn people away in the past.
People love images of killing. I don't know that it's something the city should be part of. And reasonable minds disagree.
So I think if we do raise the bar, we've gotta allow, allow the Parks and Recs department to be more creative in how they, how they generate revenue as well. So you may need to shut your email off or phone off, but let them be a little creative.
I think they're doing great.
They are.
Because you, not, not being here the time that I've been here, I mean, there were never numbers like this. I mean, Keith remembers, Steve remembers. I, I mean, you know, these events used to just lose money. Every, I mean, more than what they're doing now. There was no cost recovery. Well, there was, but it was, wasn't a focus. We made it a focus. Now, you know, you wanna turn around and view other communities where they require their Parks and Rec director to only have an event if it has a hundred percent cost recovery? You know, then your quality of life, what's the point?
Right.
You know, people enjoy these events. They, they talk about Oviedo because of these events. And, you know, whether you like Carnival of Screams or not, that's fine. There's others who do. There's people who, you know, marshmallow drop, my kids are way beyond that. I don't know if yours are, and you probably not.
My youngest one will participate.
Yeah, but he'll go out there and tackle people on these events. We know it's gonna happen. There's Snow Mountain, you know, people enjoy that. MLK Parade, I mean, people certainly enjoy that. And the cost recovery on that's gotten up to seventy percent. And that used to have like no cost recovery years ago.
And you also, not, not just look at the percentage, but you look at the dollars. I mean, that event doesn't cost that much to put on, as opposed to some of the other ones as well. So there's...
You weren't here when it was a blank check for twenty grand to put on that event, or fifteen, what was it?
Which one?
MLK.
Oh, yeah. I mean, initially, when we started, I mean, years ago, I mean, there was not much cost, if there was any cost recovery, there was none because the initial program was started at Riverside Park.
Right.
But when does that even, like, how does that cost anything? It seems like, you know, there's police involved, and then we go on a parade.
The stage. We pay for the entertainment. We pay for the bounce houses, pay for chairs and tables and tents. So there's, there's costs associated.
Years back, it used to be a blank fifteen thousand dollar check.
When it was ran initially at Riverside Park, there was no, there was no revenue whatsoever. It was pure expense.
Drew, I think you're doing well, but I don't know what we do, where we go from here with the Parks and Rec cost recovery at thirty percent. But I guess Councilman Britton, or Deputy Mayor, excuse me, was asking for more breakdown on the numbers. So maybe if we can get, clarify what you want from them.
I pulled Jerry, I think Jerry can pull it out. That's, I'd be interested to know what the true...
Let's see what it looks like. After you all sit down and get those maintenance costs out, and give us a better picture as we're going into the budget year.
We can do that.
You know, and we're, we're a growing city. We've done this with other things. We used to subsidize water for years until we decided that's a big enough fund to make it an enterprise fund. Maybe we're getting big enough with our programming, with all our parks, to pull all that in and throw it together.
That's true, too.
Can we increase what I think?
Are you suggesting it run itself and be a, it is a hundred percent cost recovery? Because I think Winter Springs does that, and I'd be very interested to see what that would look like for you on the fees.
We're getting big enough to where we maybe need to track. I'm not saying we need to make it a hundred percent, but we could subsidize it. We can make it a policy. We'll subsidize it, whatever number we pick.
Winter Springs only runs like three events a year.
Oh, exactly. But they're all a hundred percent cost recovery, and all those people come over here. So I'd be very interested to see if you could maybe do a quick little poll or something, the next event, and figure out how many people live in Oviedo city limits versus are just coming to our free wonderful events that we're subsidizing.
Taking up our parking space.
Yeah, taking up our parking space.
Just have a, just have a raffle and have everybody put their address down.
Oh, that's a good idea. Free parking if you live here, and charge twenty bucks if you don't.
Parking meters. We can start checking licenses.
That's a great idea.
I know people that come from Orange County to our event.
They do, yeah. They absolutely do.
Drew, just to wrap up, listen, you know what? You can, all the business side of it is good. What should be said is that, I mean, we've all been here for a long time. I hear so many good things about all these...
Right, all these events.
We are, we are, we are the envy of the area with all these events. We have, no other city really does as much as we do and has the facilities we have. So you keep doing what you're doing, figure out the financial stuff, and just keep rolling. I mean, I didn't realize till I just saw this, almost sixty percent on those, on that first slide. I mean, you're doing good. And the events, everybody enjoys them. Everybody doesn't like every event. We're not gonna cancel Halloween because of other issues, and we're not gonna cancel marshmallow drops because our kids are in college. So, but overall, everything is...
Well, there's something horrified about a certain person in a bunny suit dropping stuff from a helicopter. I mean...
That might be scary.
Is that horrible, Carnival of Screams?
But, you know, the other thing, getting into our events and, you know, other people coming from other areas into our city and seeing what our city is all about, that's just, that's free promotion.
Yes. I appreciate that, Councilman. I will tell you, that's all staff. So I gotta give kudos. We're kudos-staying staff does an awesome job. And not only our athletic staff, but Sean and Terry are doing an awesome job, as well as all of our other staff members. So I gotta give them kudos. We're...
And it's none of the four that are here who get in the bunny suit and go up in the helicopter.
No, I think Sean's the...
Actually, that's Antonio.
That's Antonio.
That's Antonio. And he's been wanting to rappel out of that helicopter for years, and I won't let him.
He won't let him.
That's a good, that's a good revenue generator.
Yeah, I know, look at Connie. Connie's going, no, Drew. We can't, we can't...
Wouldn't that be so cool, have the ex-marine in a bunny suit rappelling down?
I always thought that'd be cool.
Kick him out, make him parachute down.
Ooh.
Yeah, he's doing good.
Look at Connie. All right. Connie, Connie just got like twelve gray hairs, just by saying that.
That's a new program, parachute.
All righty, next item. Everybody good with this, Drew, for him?
If I could, so what you would like us to do is that the next work session bring you a more, a more defined program?
On the thirty percent stuff.
Okay. We can do that.
I think on, on the programs right now, just keep that number up there.
We will try.
All righty.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, we're up to item number five, amending the city charter and setting a referendum election. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we'd like to get direction on a charter amendment and to address one of your conversations that you had at a prior meeting, actually in April, no, actually in August, about having, re-establishing your terms, and also looking at term limits. And tonight, we have for you a preliminary resolution for you to look at. We also have a preliminary ordinance for you to look at. But I really don't think we need to get direction on the ordinance just yet. Tonight, the big thing is whether or not to establish yourselves as a charter review committee, and also as far as the scope that is provided in the resolution. The draft ordinance establishes the discussion that you had prior regarding the establishment of four-year terms, and also the establishment of term limits of two terms for each candidate. And it also gives you a process by which to implement those four-year terms. It also provides for specific language that would be placed on the ballot. One of the things that I felt strongly about that we should at least know tonight is which election you would like to do this on. We have two choices. We have the November general election, but we also have the August primary election. And in our discussions with the supervisor of elections, he's recommending the August primary election because the general election is going to have a number of initiatives that will be on there in addition.
Forty-one, it says here. I'm just flipping through this. Oh, my goodness. All forty-one are approved? Is that what Mike is saying?
Something like that.
Really?
It's gonna be a tough ballot in November.
You gotta get a measure.
How many pages is the ballot going to be?
Well, when you consider that our stuff will probably be in the back.
It usually is. It's the last thing.
And so he's concerned that people will either not participate in the, in the voting or vote no. That's usually the case. When they're that tired, they just hit no and move on.
What is that? It's not called voter fatigue. It's called something when they don't vote on everything.
That's voter fatigue.
Voter fatigue.
I think that's the biggest thing tonight is because if you do choose the primary election, we need to have things, we need to bring the ordinance to you in there. And so...
I think you answered the question. If we do this, I mean, I would assume August. I mean, you can't be on the plane with forty-one questions, can we?
It, I think it will definitely impact the number of people who actually participate.
Could we do it in November, though? Like, if there's people running in November, and they don't know if they're running for a two-year or a four-year term, I'm also kinda wondering how, when qualifying is impacts this. Because you, you would almost think that you'd have to know by the four qualifying ends, what the length of term that you want to qualify for is.
Well, that's, that's what August would do for you.
Well, it wouldn't because the August, the election is after qualifying ends.
I thought it's before, isn't it?
Nope.
It's after.
No, it's all kinda lumpy.
You'd have to take care of it simp, I mean, like Ryan said, this ordinance isn't what's cast in stone, but you deal with it within the charter amendment itself.
Okay.
So even though you may have run for two years, it's a four-year term, it turns out.
Because that might impact whether people wanna do it or not do it.
Well, you said this has to get back by May. So by May, we're gonna have a public meeting where we will say this is gonna go through. So anybody, anybody pulling the packet is gonna know that if they run this year...
The possibility is...
The possibility is a four-year term.
You know, I just, I did, as long as I'm just have the mic, you mind, Mr. Mayor? You know, having run quite a few elections and helped people run elections, I have to tell you, people in the city laugh at us. There's an election every year. And in the past, other members up here have put this on the ballot, and I'm just gonna be frank, citizens were very upset at that time. That was my mantra to run back in two thousand and five. They didn't like what we...
They didn't like what was going on, they were very upset with their city, that's what I ran on, we're gonna give it back and we're gonna do what we've done now all these years later. And I think also the way it's written, I mean, we're paying $20,000, $25,000 every other year to do an election that we don't have to do. We were now assured that our council is out there when the governor is running and when the president is running, more people will get to see it. I mean, last year, we had 14 percent turnout, you know? So I think it's a smart thing to do, and really, the two-year term, I mean, other than Congress, I mean, Congress still has it, you know, our congressman, but most cities, Winter Springs has four years, they have three-term limits, right? So, I mean, every year having an election, the citizens, you want to talk about voter fatigue, they're tired of it. You know, you knock on doors, hey, you guys just run, and then you're running again. And then the people that get here, they sit here for a year, as smart as these two are, there is no doubt, they will tell you, it took them a few months to figure it all out, now they gotta go run again, you know? So...
Well, when it was Steve and Stephen, they thought you guys were running every year.
Yeah, when me and Shank were out there, that was ridiculous. I always tell Shank, the only reason he kept winning because they thought he was me, you know?
But how long was it before, I think we went to like 10 years where neither of you had to run? So it's not an issue of people are tired and y'all had to run so much, it's all of a sudden, now there's people who, or to a period of time where people seem dissatisfied again and interested in running.
Well, I don't think they're dissatisfied, I think when you have an election every year, could you imagine like if the president got elected and then he's gotta run the next year or, you know, some other big office? To me, and I might say, this was your idea.
Oh, it was.
You brought this up in December.
But does it address the problem to change the length of, I think it's a good idea, this is playing devil's advocate, the real problem is the possibility of people running who aren't taking it seriously. It's not that people have a choice.
You want to know something, I agree with you, and I think with two-year terms, well, this is a short walk, I'll be out of here in two years, four years, they're gonna take it serious.
Well, the other thing is, we could look at changing when qualifying is and what it takes to qualify and make it, you know, up the ante, because right now, you gotta get 25 signatures, pay $118 and you're on the ballot. If we made it a little more difficult and made it be, you know, more front-loaded and talking with some people on staff about, you know, succession planning, things like this, if people had to qualify prior to when the budget really gets going, like in June, like if people qualified in May, then we would know, you know, who should we be looking to be paying attention? And how do we bring people in who may be interested in being part of the process? And, you know, there's just a little bit more lead time, so...
If you're not serious about running for office where you have to run a city of almost 40,000 and you need all these other things, then you shouldn't be running.
Well, no, not other things, but if in May, you say you gotta have, let's say you gotta have 100 signatures and you gotta do it in May instead of in August, well then you kind of know who's out there way early. I'd like to see that added into the mix, so I don't know if we need to decide that now or if it's something that could be done later. But I think that would help address the actual problem of people showing up last minute and not really taking it seriously, which I don't really think is an ongoing problem. I think maybe it might have felt that way to some last year.
I don't think that's really the problem, in my view, it's just that there's an election every single year in Oviedo, and that's not good.
But there wasn't for years and years on end.
Yes, but there was the opportunity to have it, that there was an election every year.
And I'll tell you another thing that's silly, it's silly that the mayor's seat gets elected with 2,600 people, or like two seats.
That is, yeah.
Get elected with 2,600 people and three seats get elected with 14,000.
17,000, are you?
Well, the last time I did it was, you know, when I was on your cycle, it was 14.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, I think that was the first year that we were on that cycle.
Yeah, because it was August before, right?
It was Shank and I, and Shank at the time, he got a boatload of votes, remember? He kept rubbing that in, I got more votes than you.
I think Cindy still holds the record.
He might.
I'm second.
He had like 9,200 or something like that, he had a lot of votes, but, you know, that was a presidential cycle, you had, you know, people out, more interested. You know, when we run in these off-year elections, it's silly, I mean, it just, it always has been, whether I've been sitting in this seat, whether any of the other mayors have been sitting in the seat, and his seat forever and ever, you know, to run it, have somebody who's gonna run your city running this off-year election at 2,600, and I realize that's what other cities do, and the reason why other cities do it is that it's easier for an incumbent to keep winning in these off-year elections. You know, it's name recognition, so you get, you know, a thousand of your friends that go out and vote and you win.
Well, some of the, I mean, some of the cities I've seen, they do elections...
In March.
Yeah, and really, Winter, what is it?
A lot of them do it.
Windermere does that, and, I mean, there's like maybe 500 people that vote somebody in.
Yeah, you gotta get on the governor and the president, you gotta make it...
Eatonville just had their election, they do them on a Saturday, and I think 200 people voted. I mean, the guy who got elected mayor got 110 votes or something, it was, you know...
So one of the things that...
Well, can I ask you just a question? She brings up a great point. You have to run this year, are you okay with a four years if it passes?
I am.
Britton, are you okay with four years?
I don't have an opinion one way or the other, to be honest with you.
Chief? I love Keith, whatever.
So there's three people out of running, the other ones, nobody's filed, so, you know, I just think it, I'm tired of Barbara having to write the check every other year for $25,000 for, you know, 14 percent of the super voters in Oviedo to come out, to me...
But it's like entertainment, how much do we lose on fireworks? People love to vote.
No.
Okay, so the thing, the piece of this that I think is more important is the term limits. I think that a lot of the dissatisfaction that we've heard in the past is, you know, no offense to you guys, it's just, it's people being in office for really long times.
Some of us are well-liked, though.
You are.
All right.
You are.
Get that out there.
No, 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 I just...
That's actually the difference in the previous charter...
Yeah, the previous ones, they weren't liked.
Was that there was still no term limits, so this is a good compromise. I'm not sure eight years is the right number, or 12 years or what?
I think we put it out there once at 12 years.
Didn't pass.
It didn't pass, and it was closer than times before.
You're right, Councilman, because, yeah, we didn't have two terms, and I really have, you know, when you brought this first up, I thought a lot about it, I said, you know, in the off-year, it's easy, like the mayor said, you get a thousand people come out, you know, you have name recognition, you win, it's almost, you know, I'm not gonna say it's not fair, if you're doing a good jo, I always feel like the people will get it right, even in an off-year, if you do bad, they'll kick you out.
And it's a lot, I gotta be honest now, since I've done it in both cycles, it's a lot more...
It's so much easier.
No, it's a lot more fun when you're running in a governor or presidential cycle. It's more fun, there's more energy.
Then there's other people holding signs with it.
Well, yeah, people are engaged, people are, you know, when you run in the off-year, you gotta get people interested, you gotta go...
Nobody cares.
You gotta go, you go knock on someone's door and they're like, what the hell do you mean there's an election? You know, it's...
But I thought a lot about this when you brought it up, and I was not a fan of term limits, and I can't say that I am at the point, but I thought about it. You know what? If it's good enough for the President of the United States, it's good enough for us, and, you know, I always felt like term limits, like Shank would always say, he'd never like term limits, and he would always say, you know, the people are the term limits, if they don't like it, they'll kick you out. Mayor Land in a pop, how long did he stay there, right, Your Honor?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two years, so the people liked him. I feel like if Reagan didn't get sick and wasn't old, I feel like they would have kept electing Reagan, you know? Roosevelt in for three terms because they liked him, you know, so, but I think at this point in time, I think it's a good thing, you know, I'm okay with it.
I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages to it, I mean, some of the advantages or some of the boards that the mayor's seat sits on, you know, you get seniority and, not tenure, but you get seniority, you know, like Oviedo is set to be next year chairman of Metro Plan, you know, for the MAC Committee, which means that we actually have the seat on the big board next year, so...
So like you got a seat on the big board, or who's got, O'Handlon, you or just Oviedo?
No, for the MAC Committee, for the mayor's committee.
Okay.
The mayor's committee, the chairman, which Oviedo is in line to be the chair next year, so on January 1, I think it is, I'll be chair of MAC, and then I have a seat on the big board for two years, or Oviedo has a seat on the big board for two years. But, you know, there's certain things that could come with it with longer terms. You know, the last time that we were in line to have a seat on the big board was Mary Lou, Madam Mayor, she was in line to be chairwoman, and, you know, then her husband got sick.
Is it tied to the person or the office? Because that's a big deal, like if there's this...
It's tied to the office, so...
Okay, so if Oviedo gets, like if Mary Lou had stuck around just long enough, then it would have...
She would have had it, and then if your term ends, then they're not necessarily gonna give it to new, they're gonna reset it.
Okay.
And the way it works is there's, gosh, it's 15 of us, 16 of us, and they try to rotate it back and forth amongst the counties, you know, because you have three different counties, you have the Orange County mayors, like Gary Brun has been chairman of the committee many years, many times, then it goes back and forth, so it'll go Orange, Seminole, Orange, Seminole, and Osceola only has two cities, and a lot of times, their mayors have declined, even though they were in rotation, so it's our rotation this time.
So it's all rotation, it's not necessarily the ordinary?
And it's not so much, it's rotation and if the other mayors like you.
And is the off-year election, does that whack things out, like, because everything is based on even years?
It all whacks things out, it doesn't matter whether it's off-year or on-year, it's just, my point being, longer terms would give more stability to it.
Give you better, yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
You know what else would be good, too, is that when you move out to this governor-presidential cycle, I know like when I get a ballot sometimes, you know, I know some of the judges, but I don't know all of them, so I'll go Google the judges, see who appointed them, what they've done, and I think that that would, they'll do that with us, too. Okay, I got some guy wants to be mayor in my city, let me look him up and see what he's doing, you know, so I think it has enormous benefits, you know, and I think the timing is right, because it was a different time and a much more tumultuous time up here when it was asked before, and I think it was asked for the wrong reasons before, honestly, my own opinion, when it went on there, bundling of things and whatever, it wasn't right. I think now, you know, if it does not pass, you never ask again, you know?
Was it bundled, it wasn't bundled the last time, though, was it?
No.
It was the first time that was the pack and the whole disaster.
No, the bundle was...
That was the year we were on the committee.
The bundle was 2005.
2004 or 2005, yeah.
Yeah, that was the bundle, that was a big mistake. And then the funny part was, is that when we unbundled it, everything passed by terms.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there were no term limits.
No term limits, right.
Yeah, back then, so then we brought back terms at one other time, a couple of years later, because we did it like two or three times in a row, almost.
Yeah, it was like kept asking, asking, it was like quit asking us.
Yeah, it was like three terms limits, so...
Yeah, three-year, I think there was three-year terms in there at one point.
But I don't think we ever explained it to folks, I don't think...
Well, the language in this is not outstanding, and I think that we might be shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit, framing it as we are with two people who are up here getting automatic year extension, it might be better to try to correlate the 20 to the 24 cycle and say that the first year is maybe a three-year term, that would mess it up, that wouldn't it? If the first was three, two...
This is the cleanest way to do it.
I agree, it's the cleanest, but I...
But that language, though, Megan, is spot-on, because every time we've asked before, we did not talk about the financial aspect of it. You know, we can take $25,000 and you can go buy some nematodes.
Well, we need to say what the, we need to say what the number is. You don't want to put nematodes on a golf course, do you?
I don't know if you want to, I'm saying you could buy a lot of them.
You put nematodes under St. Augustine, so you don't have to do pesticides.
This is the cleanest way to do it.
They kill St. Augustine.
Yeah, nematodes don't.
Well, we can debate...
Well, we'll talk about nematodes later.
What do you think, Drew, how do nematodes work?
We've gone 45 minutes beyond my imposed limit, but, which I knew was gonna happen, but...
I'm over, tap my foot.
Yeah, I know, I'm...
When you're gonna get that mess.
You're getting nervous, I see. Brian, what was the direction you needed?
Right now...
Just what do you need right now?
Tonight, do you want us to bring the resolution to you, Nate?
Does everybody want this on the August ballot? That's the question.
Yes.
There you go, Brian, what else you need tonight?
August ballot, okay. And the resolution as far as declaring you the charter committee?
It's only one question, this one we can handle.
So is this now official, it's going to the August ballot?
No.
No, and I personally would prefer to have something like this come from not people who are elected, because this, it's such a specific to people who are already here kind of a question. I don't know if that's feasible time-wise, especially if we only want to put one thing on the ballot.
Are you gonna appoint, you can't appoint a charter review committee and get the timeframe.
Yeah, maybe not.
We have one question, it's one question that's been lingering for 20 years, you know, why, the panel of people, look, that's when you and I first got...
We keep asking that same question, they've said no so many times, it'd be nice if people who weren't us said it.
It wasn't asked correctly, and it wasn't pointed.
Quite frankly, the charter's pretty clean.
It is pretty clean.
I mean, you know, the last couple of times, and you were on one of the committees, Steve was on the committee, and there was one other time that we had a citizens committee on it, I mean, I don't think I cleaned up pretty well compared to what it was. You know, this is the only thing that I think the citizens need to understand why these four-year term works better, it gets more participation for the elections, you don't have, you know, 2,300 people or 2,600 people coming out to elect two-year members, I mean, that's, and then you have three of them getting elected by what you guys get elected by. Now, you know, and that was part of the problem when we switched it, if you all remember, we used to run on the primary. So when we ran on the primary, your seats, they were about, you know, 5,000 to 6,000 people that would come out there in the primary, because that's, again, that's what I used to run on, and that's about what it was. And then you'd have the off-year elections where we'd get, back then, 2,000, you know, not even, 1,500 sometimes, but at least the numbers were closer. Now you got, you know, 2,500, and how many last time voter few were out there voting?
Oh, it was like 17,000 total voted.
Right, I mean, that's...
That's a lot.
That's crazy, I mean, so...
Well, here's another idea that I think is a really interesting one, what if everybody, I'd love to see the mayor on one cycle, and this is like a total theoretical thing, and everybody else on a different cycle, and you pick your favorite four, everybody goes on one...
That's kind of the way Windermere works.
Can we do that? I call Mike Ortell to see if that's even feasible, but I think that would be a really neat thing, because then you can say, well, I'm looking at all these...
You could.
You could.
Yeah.
Yeah, top four win, and then it takes so much of the strategizing and, like, it makes it a more camaraderie kind of a thing, like, hey, I can work with, I can work with anybody, because, you know, that's how I feel, I can work with him.
I don't know how that does, though, for continuity staff projects. I mean, you can get things just, a whole entire council wiped out in a two-year term.
Well, maybe split it then. Do two, it could be, pick your favorite two this cycle, pick your favorite two this other cycle.
Isn't that what people do now?
Well, no, because you pick the person you want to run against. If you just said, pick your favorite two people from all the people who are up for election this time. There we go. That's the solution right there. Just do council together, and mayor is a separate thing, councils just together, and you just pick your favorite two.
So you have four council members who've been up there for four years, going into their next one, have all this experience and know what's going on with all the stuff, and then you get four rookies, and I...
And you said, pick your favorite two.
And I've said this about you guys, you guys are some of the smartest people ever sat up there, and I have watched, because I've been here for a long time, and it took you guys six, eight months to figure it out. So I'm going to...
Which is really good. It took him 18.
So it's going to take, so it's going to, so we're going to have four rookies running a city with everybody...
We wouldn't. No, no, I like this two, the two and two. Keep it how it is. Keep two and two, pick your favorite two. Can it be done?
Did you say, pick your favorite two?
Pick your favorite two.
Top two vote-getters.
Top two vote-getters.
Mike, just to note, Sanford's, first of all, y'all have a very clean charter. We just, I've read a lot of charters lately. You got a really clean charter, except for the one issue about tie votes and whatever else you want to do about, but Sanford's has been going through charter review. Somebody proposed, I forgot the technical word for that type of voting, and Mike Ortell said, you can't do it.
Can't do top two?
No, you can't. Like, five people run, you pick your top two, and you figure out who got the most votes.
We can't do that?
Nope.
Oh, that's the most egalitarian way to pull it off.
But one of the, I mean, one of the other, I mean, down the line to think about, now that the city's gotten much larger, is to look at districts as well. So then you run your district.
But then would it be, you have to live in the district and you run at large, or you only vote within your district?
You live in the district and run at large.
Okay.
Sanford does, you live in the district, then you vote in the district.
Right.
Okowi, live in the district, vote in the district. Winter Springs, live in the district, vote at large. And then the mayor is citywide.
The only thing that would push you towards district position is if you had minorities enough to make it somehow required that way, and I don't think you all do. Sanford, if you read the Sanford Charter for 20 years and then looked how they actually voted, the charter and the votes didn't match, because the charter said citywide, and the courts ordered them to do it district. If you go district-wide, then every 10 years you're going to have to redistrict, too, and that's an expense.
And then the funny thing is, if you look up, look at the makeup of the council over the years, except for the earlier years when I was here, just by attrition, they've all come from, naturally, come from different areas of the city. It's been amazing. I mean, obviously, we were first here, I mean, because the old part of town was still the bigger part of town. I mean, one, two, three...
There's like three all, yeah.
Three came from the old part of town. I came, I was on the south end of town, and then Bob was in Alafoya, but everybody else was from up north.
Believe it or not, this group has a good spread-out way. I was actually happy to be Shangri-La.
Yeah, we are.
Because you get out of my district. You give me a hard time out there.
I mean, if you look at us now, I mean, I'm from the south, you're from the old section. You know, Bob's from Wadelley, Twin Rivers, and then Steve's out east. I mean, so we're pretty well considering, you know, we are pretty well spread out, and it's been like that for the last eight, 10 years, when you follow. So I've been amazed by it. We haven't had two people elected from the same neighborhood in 15 years.
Forever.
Yeah. All right, so there you go, Brian. You got that one.
All right, so we'll bring you the resolution in April. We probably could try to do that on April 2nd. Do you need to have a discussion item by April 16th before we bring first reading of the ordinance?
Bring the ordinance, and if we're going to mess it up, we'll mess it up.
Okay.
It sounds like...
Bring the ordinance in May then.
Okay.
Then it will go to Mike for August.
Yes. That's what we're shooting for.
Great.
All righty, Brian, last item, then let's do this one in about 10 minutes if we can.
Not a problem, Mayor.
Hmm?
Not a problem. Tonight, we have a request to give us direction regarding a visioning process. Basically, you tried this back in 2015, and we never made it out of committee.
Nope, it crashed, burned, and there were no survivors.
But since then, we've had discussions along the way, and I remember one particular discussion about, there was concern about the scope of the RFP.
And I think that Deputy Mayor brought that up.
Right. And Mr. Booth and I gave it a good shot, and I remember the meeting, I could not find the date, but I do remember the meeting, that the Deputy Mayor said it just didn't go far enough. So we put our heads together again, and we've come up with this revised scope. And what this scope does is it provides a three-phased program. The first part of it is to, is for the facilitator to prepare what I call a community profile. And this looks at our demographics, it looks at our socioeconomic situation, it goes through all of our master plans, our comp plan, our CRA plan, our economic development plan, our strategic plan, and it tells us where we are.
Which is what, exactly what I asked for a couple of years ago.
And this community profile basically becomes the base for which we build the vision. The second phase of this vision is the actual visioning process, and that...
No, Brian, I don't mean to interrupt, just for clarity, and some others might be thinking. Are you thinking this is going to be three separate RFPs, or it's going to be one group to carry it all the way through?
One facilitator to take us all the way through. And the visioning process, it can take its own form. The big question we always have to ask with the visioning process is how grassroots do we want to be. The more grassroots we make it, the bigger it becomes, the longer it takes. But it's an engagement process. And when you're looking at visioning, I used to do, I did a presentation years and years ago.
You're the expert on this.
And it was, I don't know if y'all remember George Carlin and his baseball versus football routine. Well, I did a planning versus visioning routine, a planning in Florida versus visioning routine. And, you know, visioning is looking out into the future and saying, this is what I want to be, or this is what I want to be when I grow up. And I often talk about the evolution of cities.
Your postcard.
The postcard, yeah. What do I want to be when I grow up?
And that darn postcard, you're 70% accurate.
Sort of, yeah. I don't know, I've had a crystal ball or something. But when you're looking at planning, especially in Florida, a lot of planning is done, is done based on numbers. You know, can, you look at a population, well, how many houses does it need at the volume it's, and how much water will they consume, and how much sewer will they produce, and how much trips will they generate? And if you, and then everything's based on these numbers. Whereas visioning is actually, it's getting back to traditional town planning, where you actually look at your area and do a lot what we did back with How Shall We Grow? Take the information that you've got, and then look at how you can make something, and what you see in the future.
A Bead on the Park.
Yeah. We did a visioning process with A Bead on the Park. We did a very small visioning process with ION, and, you know, where we actually learned from the community. We never, not one of us that was part of that would have ever thought that someone would walk in and say, I really wish you'd turn the lights off on the ball field so I can sleep at night, you know, or make it so it doesn't shine up my backyard.
Clean my sidewalk.
Yeah, clean my sidewalks, you know, just things like that, that, you know, we were looking at sewers and septic tanks and, you know, it's traffic calming, and how can we get better coordination between the sheriff's office and the PD? I mean, those are things that we were looking at. But this one lady walked in and said, hey, can you, can you stop lighting up my backyard so it looks like daybreak? And, you know, lo and behold, we found an energy grant, we've got new technology in our ball fields, and she's okay. So, I mean, you see all things like that. But that's what the visioning does, and it doesn't worry about whether or not you've got capacity to do something. It's what you want to work for. And then the third phase, after you do the community, after we do the visioning process, the last phase for the facilitator is to create that strategic action plan, take that information that we've learned.
Right, well, we used to have hanging on, well, it's still some of it's on the...
Yeah, it would be an update of our strategic plan is what it would be, but to take that information and to identify it, what's low-hanging, what is, you know, short-term, what is a long-term objective, and get that laid out for us so that we, you know, it gives us a roadmap. And one thing, too, is that the legislature actually wants us to do this. Our comprehensive plan target here right now is 2025. So it's time for us to update our comp plan, and the state statutes, you know, it encourages cities to do these visioning processes, you know, to start, to kick off the update of your comprehensive plan, because it gives your comp plan something to work for, even though you have to go back into that minutia of, you know, how many trips did you generate? How much water did you draw out of the ground, and, you know, things like that. But this is what I would like to do with you. If you're interested in doing the visioning process, we've got to go through another RFP process. And so I think what I really need help with is how do you feel about this new scope? Because I can tell you, it's going to increase costs. It will. But we couldn't go, we can go through the RFP process now. It would set us up. We can start making it part of the budget as far as once we get the RFPs back. Or we can also, if we get it back and it's an astronomical price, then we can look at maybe pushing it further into the fiscal year so that it's not a complete hit, you know, in that first year. But I guess what I would like to know from you now is, if you're still interested in doing this process, if you want us to go through the RFP, if you want to take some time to look over this revised scope, I'm fine with that, because the RFP is going to take a couple of months, you know, so...
Why will it take so long? It seems like you should be able to do it in like three weeks, they send it back, and the golf course is $112,000 ahead of schedule, because we had budgeted, I think it was a quarter million dollars in anticipated loss. So like, that money was set aside in our main budget, and we're on track not to spend it. I think we've got the money to vision right now, between that and the savings on the air handlers and some other, and I think the fire department came in like 60 grand low, and there's all these things that have freed up some cash for right now.
The thing about it is, and you're right, we do have that money, but not all that money is general fund money. And so some of it, like the golf course money, that's all enterprise money.
But then we'll just repay the funds? So, yeah, I guess that's true, that's enterprise. But if we can raid other enterprise funds and give it to the golf course, why can we not take, well, I guess that would be taking the shortfall. So it's still loss. We're losing less from the general fund than we planned to lose from the general fund.
But that means that there's more money in there.
But then there's more in the general fund, yeah. So the money, one way or another, is available to be used somewhere else, because we had planned for it to be gone.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's going to be that much more expensive, because if you structure it right, it's a knowledge capture exercise to go look at the old plans and everything and pull that together. And then the other two steps are what we were asking for in the first place.
It's like a tidy little pile. You hand them and say, tell us exactly what this is saying now.
One of these groups probably wrote two or three of our plans.
Plans, yes.
Brian, didn't it take the last one back in 2015, didn't it take them like three or four months just to get everything back to us?
Well, I think it'll take at least 30 days to get your responses back. In some, you know, that's what it'll take. It'll take at least 30 days.
Right.
I mean, if you really want it done correctly, you need at least 30 days to get your responses back. And then I would ask you again, because this is such a monumental process, to be that committee again, and, you know...
We were the committee on the one in 2015?
You all were.
Oh, okay.
How long does, how long does the whole, doesn't the whole process, does it take about a year?
As far as the visioning process?
Whole visioning, a year, a year.
It really depends on how grassroots you get.
Yeah.
You get really grassroots, and you want to get a good cross-section of the community.
And we're going to do RFP this time, not RFQ.
We're going to do an RFP.
So RFP includes prices.
Price will come with it.
We don't have to go through what we did last time.
No, price will come with it.
Yeah, we just had to request all that, and then everybody got mad at us.
I didn't.
Not you. Certain people in the purchasing department weren't happy with us.
Now, on the...
That was one thing, too. We were in transition as well.
Now, on the timing front, I like the idea of having it be, you know, start sometime, I don't know if it's even feasible, start sometime in the summer and have it spin, like, because that kind of avoids being where people are busy for the holidays. I feel like more people will participate if we start over the summer.
A lot of it depends on your facilitator and the type...
And when they're available?
Yeah, and the type of process they bring to you. I've been in two different processes. The first process was done through a leadership program, and the city sat on the sidelines, and we basically got trained as facilitators, and that's how we participated. In the second process, the city drove it. We established the executive committee, and we drove the process, and both of them took about 12 months to complete.
Is this the Kingsbridge here and the Kingsbridge there one, that one? Who was the groups that...
Oh, that was down in Cape Coral, yes.
Or something like that.
They had all the different little political parties that had to be a part of it, yes.
But getting it out of political season seems like it could, you know, just get some of that out of it.
It doesn't cost us anything to send out the RFP, right? So you can see what the price is, because when, you know, I would just say, look, it's all very important, 1.9 million in the hole right now, and if there's money for visioning, it's got to go to pay the mortgage first. So we got to get through those couple of budget meetings to see what it is. We can't go spend this money now until we know how the budget is. And we're not going to know how the budget is until, Jerry, when we get a handle on it, really, May, June?
But how will we know what to do with the budget if we don't know what the priorities of the town are? Because I think we're probably going to have to either choose to tinker with taxes and raise them, or pick some things to eliminate. And I don't know about you guys, but I don't really want to do that without at least the start of some input from the community about, you know, what things are truly valuable to them, where do they want to see us go?
But this process won't be done?
But at least it'll be started.
This will be an FY19 discussion.
I guess so.
We wrap it up with a bow and FY19 budget, say, well, this is where we want to go.
That was one of the options in there, wasn't it, Brian? The FY19 budget.
It would be.
Put it in there as a definitely good one.
It would be.
And it really ties in, because if you look at Obito on the Park, it's approaching build-out, and the new nugget is sitting a mile to the north. That is really the next phase of what we want to do.
You've got that, and a host of things. And some of the things that people expect or anticipate just aren't possible, and they don't understand that. And this process may help them understand that. Property rights, you know, silly things that get in the way, but I'm going to let you all decide, because everybody knows where I am on this thing, so...
I guess tonight, the big thing is, do you want me to go ahead and run the RFP? And if you're comfortable with me running the RFP, are you comfortable with the scope? That's really the big thing.
Why don't you let us read through the scope one, since it was just given to us, and ask us in your report at the next meeting.
Where is the, is the scope attachment?
It's the last attachment, Mr. Britton.
When you run the RFP, when do you, what timeframe are you giving to award?
What I would probably look at, we would want at least 30 days to give them time to put that together.
And it comes back to us, and it takes us 30 days, because we have to meet as a committee, and it actually has to be a separate meeting, and it gets convened, and...
Put the master plan...
They submit in 30 days, and then you award, if you award, I guess we'll just have the...
They submit, we give them 30 days to submit. Once we receive all of the qualified proposals, then we would schedule a committee meeting to review, and obviously, we've got to give you time to go through the different ones, the committee...
It was a process, yes.
And then...
And then you'll narrow it down to maybe one or two, which will be the highest ranking, and then you'll bring them in. Because, you know, when you, like, when we did Obito on the Park, we interviewed in person at least three groups, and when we did it, we trimmed us, I mean, rose right to the top. I mean, it was, you know, it was funny, because when you were looking at it on paper, there were a couple of other in there that were less money, and, you know, we couldn't figure out why this one was so much more money, and, yes, it had more of this, but then when they came in and they made the presentation, and they brought Charlie Seaman up from Boca Raton, and they obviously did their history, did their homework, they had already gone and spoken with property owners, they just rose right to the top. So it was like a no-brainer.
Right.
You know, that was the, that was the part that we got stalled in last time. You know, we broke it down to the three, and then it was a matter of, okay, do you want to just pick one or interview one? And then the whole thing just fell apart.
Well, this is, this is a situation I see that I've seen in the past when you, when you do RFPs is we, before we issue an RFP, the, our intent has to be there. I mean, unless it's some, I mean, unless the numbers are just way off, because you don't want to issue, continually issue RFPs and not.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. Like, it's a jerky thing to do to be the city. Yes, I'm sorry. We don't want to be jerks, or neither do I.
Because then people will stop, stop bidding in and spending their 30 days to, all that time, because it's a lot of effort. So we have to have that intent there and the ability, which would go back to working through the budget to at least kind of have a framework. I mean, I have no problem with doing this. I just want to make sure that our intent is there.
Exactly. And that's what happened with the last process. We got into the meeting to select the top ones. And during the meeting, the question was asked, do we really want to do this? And then the consensus of the committee was no, we don't.
See, that's not.
And so we didn't.
Maybe not the whole committee.
And I would assume, Brian, some of the same people are gonna go in again, and if they get in, and I wasn't thinking that way. That's actually a great point. I still, I'm, you know, I'm.
I don't mind sending out.
I'm out right now. I want to see the budget, and I want to see what it is. This is, this, to me, honestly, is a year or longer process, and that is a great point. I didn't think about. We send this out again, I mean, I just thought it wasn't gonna hurt, but when he said it, I'll be honest with you, I have no intention to do this now. I really don't. I think, I think Britten has said it before, we still got all these master plans to look at and stuff. I don't think it's a bad thing for maybe next year, but right now, when I hear, I have 1.9 million to deal with and other issues. I think this is such a big thing to do that I could say that, for right now anyway, I don't want to issue it and give people false hope.
Unless you let them know in the RFP what our intentions are.
Well, how fast could it be done? Could it be done with the upcoming budget cycle so that the initial inclinations could be?
I think we can get the RFP done within the budget.
Okay.
But I think you'd have to add into this RFP, and to Bob's point, you just let them know, you know, that council is considering budgeting this for 1819, and they need your best number, so to speak. That way, you're not raising the hope of, yes, they're definitely doing this, is why they have an RFP. It's more of, they're trying to work this into their budget, they need your RFP.
Yeah, that's the way that I can let down, because if we do it again, and then we don't do it, then they're not gonna be happy about that next time.
Right.
You know?
Because I've seen it where, you know, it's happened over and over again to the point where, at the very end, when you're actually deciding to do it, there may be, there may be one or two people that bid in at that point, and now you've really limited yourself.
I can tell you, one of the bidders from the last period has since retired.
But there, I'm sure there's new ones.
The gentleman who we used? Herb?
Yes.
Oh, I love Herb. Herb is awesome.
He's retired.
Well, you know, he deserved to retire.
If I correct.
This is gonna be more than a one-man show.
Yes, it will be.
Brian, why don't you rehash what you have, and I'm gonna add something to it before you rehash. I think that you need to rewrite your RFP to add something about.
We can look at it. What I understand was is that you all will take a look at the scope we provided. If there's anything that you see, April 2nd, I'll ask during my report, or anything that any empathy y'all might have. I need to go into the, into the scope and add in that we're looking at budgeting for FY1819.
Right. There's no guarantee this is happening.
Right.
We, you know, we need your numbers so we know if we can do it.
Need the best.
Right. So if you can add that language, though, and get it back to us before the meeting, so that we see, I think that would be helpful.
Is that too pessimistic a way to phrase it? Because it sounds like, I think we got two who are thinking, let's prioritize this, and heard Bob just say, I've got no problem with this as long as we can find the money. We can always find it somehow. We just have to decide if it's a priority. And it sounds like.
We don't know what the money's gonna be. I hear Bob, and the three finalists from last time were, one of them was highly disappointed that they did spend some time. I wait, you've seen what they.
Oh, I read them all, yeah. I read them all last January, and they're impressive, and it took some time to work them.
Can I ask you a question before you get, you're gonna ask in the next meeting if we do it? Is there any harm, I mean, this is already April now, we're almost April. Is there any harm in waiting till the next budget meeting, till Jerry gets a little bit more handle on this to figure out what's going on? Because, I mean, what he just said, I mean, that's what I'm worried about now, too. I mean, aside from the fact I don't think we need to do it right now, I'm still haven't changed from last year, but I'm not opposed to it. I just feel like, you know, when you get a lead, somebody wants to buy a house, and then you go show the house, and then you do all this work, and then you don't get it, and you're like, I hate that guy. I'm trying, I don't want to get there. Can't we see what?
No, we don't. We say, we'll get them next time.
Yeah.
Can't we say, can't we see what this 1.9 million turns into in June, and then revisit it in eight weeks?
But it's not, that's not 1.9 million for the end, to the end of October. That's one of the first questions I asked. Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
I guess that the thing, if we wait till June, I can't guarantee that I'll have a good number for you when you adopt your budget.
Oh, that's fine. I'm not going anywhere.
That's the thing that I can't guarantee.
I'm not going anywhere.
I'm not doing it for, we can't do anything until we get to the budget anyway. And if it's a casualty, it's a casualty. But it's a shame it's always a casualty.
As long as they understand, if you don't want them to, hey, now let's say we don't do it the second time, come back to it.
Ah, yeah, that'll be.
I ain't doing it. That'd be bad.
But if you tell them upfront.
Then they know what they're getting into.
Yeah, but that'd be like you showing, back to him, you showing a house to the same person, or showing multiple houses to the same person, and then they finally say, oh, you know what, I don't want to buy a house.
Yeah. Okay, like, that's never happened.
But it made you upset.
But then, yeah, you don't get the quality of response.
Yeah. So, I, you know, oh, and.
I think there'll be plenty of groups out there wanting to.
And I gotta say, I got this email from Mr. Boop while we were doing this. The golf course has made a profit year-to-date through February 2018 of $12,000.
Nice.
For this fiscal year. Is that, that's correct, right? Yeah, so we're in the black.
If you don't count all the other stuff.
But, but, you know what? That is an incredible trend.
Yes. And we're not even in, you know, in.
The thing I'll say to that is that you couldn't have said that before we bought the park, the course.
Exactly. This is.
You were bleeding money, and now you're making it, and it's on loan into it for a year.
And that'll, that'll add to the 30%, right?
It's 8:15. Does anybody have anything else? Mr. Group, Mr. Cobb, Mr. Boop, Kelly, hi. You've been awful quiet over there tonight?
Dang it, bro.
All righty, we're out.